We will call this meeting to order. This is the regular meeting of the Ojai Planning Commission, March 5th, 2014. Members of the public wishing to address the Planning Commission on items appearing on the agenda are requested to complete a speaker's card. They look like this. And file it with the secretary prior to the start of the meeting. Cards are available in the lobby. Speakers should state their name and address for the record and limit your comments to three minutes or less. Comments must be directed to the commission, not the audience. While Planning Commission is in session, all in attendance are expected to maintain order and decorum and to obey the orders of the chair. Could we have roll call, please?
Zabella?
Here.
Jagiello?
Here.
Foster?
Here.
Crabtree?
Here.
Merk?
Here.
Nolan?
Here.
Nicklin?
Yeah. Thank you. Uh, let's see. Commissioner Crabtree, could you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
(inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Uh, the first part of our meeting is Public Communications. Public Communications is the time set aside during the Planning Commission meeting for members of the public to address the Planning Commission on items of city business other than scheduled agenda items. Matters raised at this time may be briefly discussed by the commission and will generally be referred to staff and/or placed on a subsequent agenda. Under state law, other than for emergency items, no action can be taken at this meeting. Is there anyone that wants to speak on anything that's not on the agenda? Mr. Miley?
Oh, never mind.
All right.
Sorry.
I know. Okay. I don't have one for Bill Miley, though.
No.
Okay. Oh, well, these are all Public Communications. Ms. Haddon, did you want to speak at this point?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. My name is Etta Haddon, and I live at 421 Los Alamos Drive, which is right next door to the proposed cell tower location. The purpose of my comments tonight is to basically serve as kind of a yellow highlighter. I just want to highlight the incredible importance of your consideration of this issue and the long-range impact your decision is going to have on this community for years and years to come. I understand that there are approximately 100 letters from residents of the community that have been submitted to address this issue. That's a lot of letters to read. All of our voices should be heard, and by my comments, I'm not suggesting that they not be heard. But I would like to highlight a particular letter that I think will provide you with a succinct outline of the issues, the problems with the application of AT&amp;T, and give you kind of an outline to help follow in the process of your deliberations. That letter was written on January 27th and was submitted by Jeff Lobel, and what I'm referring to is the attachment to that letter, which I think very succinctly outlines the problems with this cell tower issue and the impact on this community. I'm hoping that this summer, I'll be able to sit out on my patio, which is next door, and not have to listen to the sound of their huge air conditioning component while it cools this cell tower. Some of the issues that have been addressed in that outline, one of them is of particular importance to me, and that's the issue of need. The reason I say that is because without need, without AT&amp;T establishing that they need that tower in that location because they have a significant gap in coverage, they don't have a case. They first have to establish that need. It's not clear to me, based on everything that's occurred, whether there's been an independent determination that there is, in fact, a need. We have AT&amp;T's opinion. We have their report. We have their information, but I haven't seen anything from the city or any independent evaluation of need. And there's nothing in that, quote, "Rincon" report that says they have a significant gap in coverage. In my opinion, they wall-surround it. So I just ask you, please, take a good, long, hard, strong look at that issue. There are other issues, alternative sites, I won't go into them, I'm sure you've heard them over and over and again. So please, the impact on this community, if it's installed, will, it'll be impossible to undo. So I thank you for your attention. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Ms. Haddon. We have, uh, the city has hired a consultant who's working on a report exactly like what you're looking for there, so...
On this, I'm sorry. Just a quick question.
Yeah.
On this, on the need for the cell tower?
Exactly.
Okay, good, thank you very much.
So that's, that's being done. And, uh, Mr. Miller?
I'm Ted Miller. I've had the pleasure of addressing you before, 574 Los Alamos. I'm right across the street from the proposed cell tower site. I just wanted to update you on a couple of developments, which I think you will find of interest and follow up on Etta Haddon's comments. At the city council meeting last week, we learned that a date had been set for the hearing, and I asked the city council for permission to meet with their council, Mr. Fletcher, and staff to help organize, for your consideration, the voluminous materials that have been submitted, so that you will be able to review them and digest them and think about them in an organized and hopefully user-friendly fashion. And to that end, I talked to Mr. Clark this afternoon, and I'm meeting with Mr. Clark and Ms. Wold tomorrow morning to begin that process. We want to try and organize the materials in a way that will be most useful to your consideration. We're committed to collaborating with staff to achieve that, and we very much appreciate the opportunity to do that, because as you've heard from so many others, including me, this is a very important issue, and we want to make sure that the materials that are in the record are organized so that you can review them in a sensible fashion and consider the issues in a thoughtful way. So, thank you all for your time and for the time that you will be spending on this matter over the next several weeks. We really do appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miller, and thanks for your work on getting that put together. Anybody else who wants to make a public comment at this point? Billy, you gonna let this, this opportunity pass by? Okay. All right. Um, next item on our agenda is the consent calendar. It's approved by a roll call vote on one motion. Should any member of the commission wish to discuss or disapprove an item, it must be removed from the consent calendar and considered as a separate item. The only item we have is minutes of the special joint meeting of the Planning Commission, February 19th. And can we have a motion on that? Anybody have any objections to the meeting?
No, I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes for the, uh, special joint meeting Planning Commission on February 19th, February 19th, and the subsequent, uh, Planning Commission general meeting.
Okay. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
All right. Any discussion? Yeah? Could we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Zabella?
Yes.
Jagiello?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Crabtree?
Epstein.
Merk?
Yes.
Nolan?
Epstein.
Nicklin?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Uh, the Municipal Advisory Council Planning Commission Liaison Report, I don't believe there is one. The next meeting is March 17th, and Commissioner Foster is scheduled to go to that meeting. Next item is the public hearing item, an ordinance titled Water-Efficient Landscaping Standards, amending Article 12 of Chapter 2, Title 10 of the Ojai Municipal Code. And I understand staff would like us to continue this.
Yes, sir. We would request that you continue it to the March 19th meeting.
Thank you. And you need a motion to that effect, correct?
Mm-hmm.
All right.
I'll move to continue the water-efficient landscaping standards item.
I'll second the motion.
All right, thank you. Any discussion? Could we have a roll call on that, please?
Zabella?
Yes.
Jagiello?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Crabtree?
Yes.
Merk?
Yes.
Nolan?
Yes.
Nicklin?
Yes.
All right. Next item is a discussion item, changes to the Village Mixed Use zoning district. And could we hear from staff on this, please? And you want us to continue that one as well?
Right, also, we're asking for a continuation, and we'd just like to explain that, um, you know, um, staff has requested to kind of research and come back with, um, the changes and, to the VMU district, and why those changes were made. And we'd just like to point out that because of recent, uh, or staff changes over the recent years, you know, there's not, um, sort of a loss of institutional memory, so we're gonna be doing a little bit of research and reaching out to some of the staff that's left and finding out, um, what they might recall from it, and then want to put it together with, um, so, um, put it together and have it complete before we bring something back to you. So we're just asking for a little bit, a more additional time.
Thank you. And you don't need any action from us on that tonight, right?
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
Okay. Well, then we get to item four, which is the second unit deed restriction requirement. And can we hear from staff on this?
Excuse me, good evening. Um, so, before you tonight is the subject of the deed restriction for second units, requiring properties to be owner-occupied. We point out that there currently is a requirement in the municipal code that requires a property with a second unit to have a deed restriction recorded that provides that the property be owner-occupied. Within your staff report, you'll find a section, actually, the actual verbiage that Section 10 dash 2.1709 reads. So, um, what we did was, we took and provided you in your staff report, some of the, um, the topic of requiring owner occupancy, and the pros and cons of removing it, and the pros and cons of retaining it, as were presented to staff during the joint meeting of the Building Appeals Board of the Planning Commission, um, which was held on January... Oh, I'm sorry, January 29th, 2014. Also, we provide for your consideration, I think we've provided for you minutes also, or an excerpt of the minutes in, of that meeting. So to give you that as background, we, so the pros and cons are given to you as a background. In addition, we felt it was prudent to give you a little addition, a little bit of additional information as to what other communities are doing in the surrounding areas around Ojai. So we just provided you with what the City of Santa Barbara, Ventura, the County of Ventura, and the City of Santa Paula do, and, um, also, as attachments, we gave you some, either their handout or their code section as to second units. And with that sort of basic underlying discussion of the issue, we would just add that our recommendation is that you discuss the issue of removing Section 10 dash 2.1709E, which is a deed restriction for the second unit, unit regulations, and to determine if there is a consensus among the commission to remove this section from the City of Ojai's municipal code. And then lastly, if there is a consensus to remove this requirement, that you forward a recommendation to the city council that they consider removing Section 10 dash 2.109E based on specific findings. And I think we're just asking you to give specific findings so that staff knows how to prepare a staff report and go forward as to what the general consensus is. And with that, I'm open to points of clarification or questions, if you have any.
Do we have any questions for staff? So Kathleen, the, my understanding is the impetus for this really came from the Building Appeals Board, is that correct?
I think, I think the community at large, maybe, and then also how, I, um, I believe that's how it's, I, my impression is that there's a, from the community, and then subsequently to the Building Appeals Board, and then subsequently to your joint meetings, it's kind of just moved, swelled up, I believe.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for staff? All right. Well, this is a public hearing, and we would like to hear from, I've got several speaker's cards on this. Judy Murphy, I think you're the first one.
Hi, I'm Judy Murphy. I live at 218A Grand Avenue in Ojai, and I've come to express a little concern about removing this owner-occupied provision, which I think might increase sales to investors who will be absentee property owners. Ojai already has too many vacant homes that are used as vacation homes by their owners and who only visit them occasionally. I believe that adding more homes owned by people who do not live in Ojai will be detrimental to the community spirit that we all value. Well, I understand that this law, uh, may impose some undue burden onto a few people. For example, there's a woman who has a second dwelling unit, and she is ready to move into the Gables and, and has a problem, can't, can't do that because of this law. But I think that you, the city, could carve out some exceptions for people like that and hopefully keep the ordinance in place. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Wirick?
Mr. Wirick, 607 North Blanchett. It's kind of a heavy heart that I, I speak not of one mind with, uh, Ms. Murphy and Mr. Miley on this. It's an uncomfortable position to be in. But I, I don't think it's a serious disagreement, I think it's more of a tactical disagreement. My problem in a, and I did want to correct the record, the, the most emphatic vo, first voice to say, "Get rid of the deed restriction," our joint meeting was one of former planning commissioners, if you recall, (laugh), Mr. Becker. My issue is that, um, I'm very uncomfortable if, if we have an issue of enforcing the vacation rental ordinance, having it viewed as a deed restriction is possibly like an enforcement tool on one class of properties as opposed to all classes of properties where the vacation rental problem is, exists, and where the ordinance is not being enforced. And so my way of thinking, if, you know, you should target the issue with the tool, and if the issue is the vacation rentals, then look at how to better enforce the vacation rental ordinance, not single out one class of properties for deed restrictions. Deed restrictions are very difficult to remove, I think it, um, it's very unwise to have a deed restriction in place that's not even-handed and not, and isn't absolutely nondiscriminatory. Uh, I think we all agree here that the existing ordinance, at least, at the very least, needs to be modified for certain carve-out, uh, exceptions. My issue with that is, we're trying to process literally hundreds of the second units under the non-conforming permit, and of course, we're talking about something that applies to non-conforming and conforming, and the idea of the city adding this to the processing of exceptions on hundreds simply, you know, I think takes away from what we're trying to do, is to streamline the whole process of getting these second units inspected and, and permitted on the non-conforming status. So, I just think that my experience is, you know, when you have a code restriction that's, any kind of municipal code restriction that's indirectly, rather than directly, directly addressing an issue like vacation rental problem being the main issue, unintended consequences ensue. And so, um, I just, I just think we ought to consider the reality of this. We don't need another piece of code in place that's largely ignored, like the leaf blowers or whatever. I mean, we ought to, you know, the things that ought, in the code ought to be followed. And I think the other problem with deed restrictions, if you research the literature, is they're generally very difficult to enforce, and I think in this case, maybe off the mark of what the, the problem is. So, for those reasons, I think it ought to be removed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wirick. Anybody else want to speak? Dale, you want to give us the Realtor's point of view on this?
What? Oh, yeah. Well, I'll talk. Dale Hanson, I live in the city of Ojai. As a Realtor, I just want to say that deed restrictions are negative impact on real estate values, and I think that's an unfair thing for us to do to our residents. The, um, the person that Judy referred to, the elderly person, I, she's not unusual as people grow older and they have to go into nursing home and, to leave their homes vacant makes absolutely no sense at all. And I think that it's a discrimination to single out elderly people and say that they can have some kind of special treatment over other people who also are, um, having to face the same difficulty with a deed restriction. Deed restrictions are never good, and, and as a real estate agent, we have to disclose that. I've never even known until very recently, and I don't think most real estate agents know, that such a thing exists on these properties, and so it's not been disclosed, but now that all of this is brought to the surface, it will have to be disclosed. That's negative to the real estate value. And I hope that we will, um, that you will advise the, or, the city council to remove it. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. And Mr. Miley, do we have like an automatic speaker's card for you, or?
(laugh)
I lost my green card.
It's in your pile. I saw him. That's...
I saw a flash of green there.
Yeah, we saw a flash.
Good evening, Bill Miley, 919 North Signal Street. I sent each of the planners, um, email yesterday through Sherry that described, um, my position, hopefully my logic, and my evidence, why I think the ordinance should not be repealed. I just recent, I just now went through, um, our planning director's memo to you, and Santa Barbara has one that they enforce. Uh, I think they require it for low and moderate income. Ventura County requires ownership. Santa Paula does. Um, I'm not sure about Ventura, but I think so. So, we might be an island, um, all our own in Ventura, in the, this part of Ventura County, Santa Barbara. Communities are held together by lots of things. This city is held together with lots of things. Physical, emotional, psychological, relationship, all. But I believe one of the major glues is homeownership. And if we take and do away with this requirement that people who have second dwellings that they rent can also rent their primary, from what I understand, there are a number of people outside this community who are investors, who are waiting to buy property of two parcel, I mean, two homes, two dwelling units, and will rent both. Their object is to invest, investment wants to get a return. I see that prices are gonna go up for rentals, and it's not gonna accomplish what we originally did back in 1988, when the council adopted this second dwelling unit and put the deed restriction in. It was to provide, basically for elderly people, you may have seen, there was a letter from the Ventura County League of Women Voters that said they support a second dwelling ordinance in, in Ojai, but they didn't want it to be restricted to other than R1, because the council in, in 1987 was thinking of, of not having the ordinance cover R1. And they said, "That's not a good idea, because seniors will then go to a certain area, and we'll have a ghetto of seniors, and the residential play, area over here won't have any seniors." The California League of Women Voters had, um, championed the granny flat back in the eighties. Okay. So, I think we've got a problem that homeowners are... Did I run a time already? We have another minute, please? Okay. Um, well, you see, you saw the reasons I put down, but two of them that I think are really important have to do with the neighborhood cohesiveness. On my neighborhood, within 300 feet, I have two houses that are not occupied most of the year, and they're only occupied occasionally. They are second homes for people who live someplace else. Even though one of them, the people who owned it were very clear when they came here, and they came to the city council, they said they're gonna live there. They never lived there, and they hardly are there, okay? It's the one with the wall problem, okay? I think we have a potential problem with taking it out, because there is the issue of turning these, I understand there are a number of high-end homes that have second dwelling units, you can take and turn those into vacation rentals. High-end homes, high-end second dwelling units, and as I pointed out about a month ago, I guess, um, when I was Googling for Apple Store, I got Apple vacation rental in the Arbela for, nice college for $850 a week, I mean, a day. So why would you rent it out to a low-income and moderate-income person? I think if anything, we should consider adding an exception for people who own it and need to go into a residential or assisted living area, so they can do that, as long as they stay in this area, and make it possible so that they don't have to sell. But if they sell, they're gonna make a lot of money, and they'll have money to pay for their assisted living. Um, I think we're going to, if we take it out, it's gonna, where, who, who's it gonna benefit? Well, it's gonna benefit the real estate industry, because I understand there are a lot of people who are interested in buying property in Ojai, but they don't like the deed restriction, 'cause they don't plan to live there. And it's, it may benefit that section of our community, but it's not gonna benefit the whole community, and I think we need to look at the public health, the mental health, the physical health of the whole community, and what's benefit, what's good for them. As far as enforcing it, it's not really a big problem. With software, you get the person's name, you find out that they are primary, living in the primary house, they're renting a second, annually you send them a notice to get the verification, if they don't, you send them another notice in a month, and if they don't, you have the code enforcement office that go out and visit. It's no problem. I don't see it as a problem at all, except for those that are illegal, and we're taking care of that. So, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Miley. And I want to say, I really appreciate the research you did on how this ordinance came to be, 'cause I really appreciated that. Thank you. Anybody else want to speak on this item? We have one other person who hasn't spoken so far. Okay. All right. Well, uh, this is a discussion item, so would the commissioners like to discuss this?
I would.
Okay, good. Jump right in.
Um, well, I did a little research, um, and what I found was that the norm is that most communities, I can't say that I looked at every community in the United States, but I looked at quite a few, do have the deed restriction. And I actually looked at a report done by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD, and they had five communities from across the country, and, um, you know, basically it was all in favor of second dwelling units because it supplies affordable housing, it supports infill, and out of all the ones that I looked at, the only one that did not, or that actually lifted the deed restriction was the city of Portland. And, um, so far, they've had no problems with doing that, but, um, I guess I just found it interesting that most places have it, and I was trying to find out the, the history behind why every, all these communities do have it, and I actually didn't come across that as of yet. I'm sure it was somewhere, but, uh, hadn't come across, so I was wondering if anyone knew, you know, how they came into effect.
Kathleen, do you know anything about that?
You know, I mean...
You're the only person I know that would...
Anyway, well, um, you know, honestly, I don't know, other than I think, I think we talked about, um, so, um, in 2003, you know, the state of California did changes to the secondary unit, right, state regulations, and did, and did outreach to all the communities in the, in the state, um, putting emphasis on removing obstacles, okay? And so, all I know is that that point in time, they did, in the, um, the bulletin that they sent out to all the cities, it did say you could provide restrictions for occupancy, but it cautioned you that, you know, some cities have gone really far, and, you know, like requiring it to be a member of the family. I mean, there's some people go beyond what we have owner-occupy, and so I think, um, I think a lot of that just stems from the whole point of, you know, granny flat, mother-law quarters. I think, um, you know, I can remember early on, when I was in my planning career, that people really thought that they had to be a member of your family that rented the other unit. And so when they found out, "No, you could rent it out to anybody," they were like, "Oh, yay, I mean, that, that really makes sense." Once you've done a unit for maybe a member of your family, either, you know, a child or, or a returning child, or an elderly parent, what are you gonna do with that? And so then it was great, that they could put money into it and then actually rent it to other people. So I don't know where the occupancy limits come from, other than, you know, um, just an idea of that's what those units were traditionally used for. Um, and so they weren't thought of as necessarily being separate units, and then, once they became separate units, then it was like, well, somebody's gotta live in one of them. But I can't... But I can honestly, I mean, I'm sorry I didn't do the same research you did, but I did find that from the state.
That a member of the task force who created the second unit ordinance spoke at one of the Housing Element meetings and said that one of the main reasons was for maintenance of the property, to monitor maintenance.
Thanks, Sherry. Any other?
Oh, go ahead.
Does, do we happen to know what the city of Ventura's? That was county, wasn't it?
We have a county.
Oh, city of Ventura doesn't have one.
Yeah, they don't have a restriction.
They don't have deed restrictions?
Yeah.
Says none.
Rosalie, what?
So, so, couple of questions, a couple of things I want to say. First, we all know, right, that this, this doesn't apply to anything that was constructed prior to 2003. So, the vast majority of the properties that have a second unit, this, this deed restriction doesn't apply to them. So, so those properties, you can, you know, you can have renters in both of those.
I think I need to respond to that.
I actually didn't know that.
Because my understanding is the woman that Dale is talking about, that was constructed prior to '03.
But she was going through the compliance program.
Right, but it was constructed prior to '03.
That's not what I'm saying. So, I'm saying anything that's coming into compliance since 2003, new or coming into compliance since 2003.
Yeah, correct. I thought you were talking about just constructed date and that's, that's not the case.
Yeah, right. Sorry. Thank you for clarifying, so.
And this has been in effect since 1988 or so, so?
No, right? 2000?
No, it was modified in 2003, but, but the ordinance itself has been in place since 88.
Well, that's what I was trying to clarify earlier today.
So, you know, I wasn't here and before 2003 and Sherry, Sherry got the, you know, we pulled the ordinance that was done in 2004. So, my understanding was that that ordinance in 2004 that was adopted was when it was, when the restriction was put in. I'd have to do additional research then because I don't have any, I, this issue came up within 1988, late today, and I was trying to verify it, but as far as, as I could go back, that, that was changed, if you go to our zoning ordinance, it references the 2004 and that appeared to be when, that it was modified significantly. And so, we were taking it back. That was what our understanding was. And so, if we're wrong, we'll have to verify that. But I think the issue is, maybe it was the annual reporting that was changed, I don't know. Because there, there is two different things. One, a deed restriction and one, you have to come in every year and do some verification. So, I don't know, we'd be happy to do a little bit more research on that, but it was, my understanding was 2004.
It'd be nice to know. Anyway, Rosalie.
Okay, so anyway, so that would be a big difference, but even so, the vast majority of our housing stock is older than the 80s. So, and I just, I just want to say that I, you know, ultimately, you're talking about keeping down the number of renters because the premise is that renters don't take care of their properties or landlords don't take care of their properties that people are renting from. And I just think that that is an outdated notion. I think that people who rent property should not be considered to, to be substandard citizens. And certainly, in this community, I only wish that we had investors breaking down the door to, to buy our properties, but they can't really buy our properties and rent them out for enough to make the kind of returns that they want. So, I also think it's not true that investors are just waiting for us to remove this deed restriction. Our properties are too expensive to, for renters to get the types of returns they need, for investors to get the types of returns they need. So, so, I'm losing my train of thought. So, anyway, I think, yes, if there's a concern about vacation rentals, that should be dealt with separately. And I do think that the, the most likely scenario is you've got, because, because of the price of the properties are such, I think that you're typically, vast majority are going to have an owner occupied in that house anyway. They're going to rent out the other unit, perhaps. And if they're, they do have cause to leave, it's going to be because there's a death or there's an illness or there is some other problem that makes them have to vacate their property. And in that case, we should not be, you know, posing an undue hardship by allowing them to rent it out.
Thank you. Anybody else?
In that report that I had looked up with HUD, there was a community actually that they cited that actually had an absentee owner clause with the deed restriction. And they said for up to two years, that just happened to be what they did. And it was for special circumstances. I'm just throwing that out as information, not that I'm advocating it, but.
Okay. So, Mr. Cracker?
Building on what Rosalie said, there, there could be a pro in that if it's owner-occupied or it's, it's not occupied by a renter and the owner is absent, the maintenance might, you know, especially the outdoor maintenance, might be lower than if it were rented. In other words, there could be an advantage to actually encouraging rental of, of otherwise vacant properties. Another thing that I find refreshing about this is that we're actually talking about deleting an ordinance instead of adding pages and pages and pages.
Mr. Daddy, would you like to speak? This is a, it's a discussion item, so we don't really have a formal.
I apologize. I, I went home and I tried to eat a little bit of dinner and I was stunned to see a couple of items were referred. I thought, well, gee, I have plenty of time. I take no issue. I take no pro. I take no con. I have no stance. I have a question. When I lose one of these units, we'll talk about the insurance perspective, and I lose a second unit and it burns down and we know we don't have an owner occupied. I just kind of want you to consider where this is going to go because it, and I'm not going to get the vernacular right, but it kind of seems like we're taking a, in some instances, an R1 and we make it an R2. So, when we no longer have the person that owns the property occupying the big unit and we lose the second unit, which I'll pay for, please consider what happens if they apply to rebuild that second unit and what they're entitled to. And again, I, I don't have a recommendation for you and I don't think it's good, I don't think it's bad, I don't think. What I'm trying to figure out is what? Because when we run into these things, I'm going to have to have an honest discussion with people and say, when we use, when we lose this, this is what is going to happen to the value of your property. So, please consider that when you get through with all of this. Again, I don't know where this road's going to go, but I know sooner or later, we're going to have one of these things. Thank you.
Thank you. Scott, come on up. Just state your name and so on.
I'm Scott Iker and I'm speaking tonight as a private citizen, not a representative of the Chamber or the Visitors Bureau. My concern is absentee landlords. And I don't mean an absentee landlord who buys a house on Park Road and lives on North Signal. I'm talking about somebody who buys a house with a second unit dwelling and lives in Alabama or Florida or someplace out of state and turns it into a HUD housing situation. And on Park Road, we've had a couple of those where we have a house in front and a house in back and they're both rented. And both times, what has happened is it ends up with three cars on blocks in the driveway and poor maintenance inside and out and multiple families living in two houses. And that degrades any neighborhood. And that is my real concern. Most of the landlords that I know in this town who own rental units in this town are very good at keeping their places up because it behooves them to, to maintain their investment. People who are out of state and are using them as Section 8 or HUD housing units don't really care. They'll charge a rate and whatever the renter can't pay, the government fills in for them. And so, it, most of the time, they don't seem to be caring about it and they're almost impossible to get a hold of personally. And I don't know what, I don't know what the city could do to bring pressure to bear for them to keep their properties up or to conform to basic ordinances. And I'm just, that is my concern as someone who lives in a neighborhood where that has happened more than once in the 30 years that we've been there.
Thank you, Scott. Mr. Holwick, I noticed you came in. Did you want to speak on this item at all? Okay, thanks. Well, staff would like us to. Yes. Well, okay, bring that up. I'm not sure that that's, we don't usually deal with that sort of thing, but.
The issue as to whether, Bill Miley, the issue as to whether it started in 2003 or 1988, 87? I asked Rhonda Bouchor to get the minutes, if she could find minutes for the times when the second dwelling units were being discussed, and I have it in my hand, what she provided me. And the November 3, 1987 meeting of the city council, they discussed the second unit ordinance. It had been, it was adopted. At one point, they were considering making it age 60 and over, but it was against the state law. And so, I want to add that because it does go back that far. Also, in 2003, I believe, the main change in the state law, it was from conditional use permit approval to ministerial. And that was the main difference at that point. And a question about whether or not the state law allows restrictions like deed restrictions? And the answer is yes, as you may know. It's definitely in the state law under second dwelling units. You can't restrict it to age and you can't restrict it to relatives, but you can place restrictions on whether or not the owner has to live on the property. But also in, there, the original point of this whole thing was to provide housing for seniors originally and then low-income and moderate-income people. And so, the question would be, and this would be factual, property is purchased, prices have gone up, in order to get you a return, you're going to have to raise the rents. And I think that's going to make, also, some communities limit, they place limits on the amount of rent that can be charged. I think Santa Barbara does that. Fact.
Great. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Dale?
Is it okay?
Yeah, come on up.
I'm sorry, but it's, it's an interesting debate having in front of you. Legal question as well. If it, it was against state law to say that you can't restrict the entitlement to a second unit for 60 and over, is there also a problem where we all are in agreement, there need to be some exceptions, putting exceptions in to a deed restriction, saying, well, we're not going to apply that if you apply for an exception, say if you're, you know, going to a lineal descendant or you're over a certain age or something, that I think everyone agreed is one consequence we want to avoid. So, is that legal? It's, I just asked the question. I don't know the answer. And the other point I wanted to make to the issue about absentee landlord is, that's going to be an issue whether or not there's a second unit, I think. You could have a problem with absentee landlords not, you know, keeping up their property, whether you have a second unit on there and they're not. And I don't think, again, second units should be, you know, singled out for that because there is no deed restriction on any owner occupancy issue for primary residence alone whatsoever. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Dale? It's becoming a real discussion.
We'll take advantage of this. I know it's not what we usually do, but, you know, for elderly people, many times they want to give their property to their sons or daughters or whatever. If they're in a nursing home, it's going to sit vacant. That's going to lead to other problems. I mean, until, like in this case that I'm referring to, that her son lives in Arizona, he's not ready to live here, but she's ready to go into a nursing home. I mean, there are all kinds of situations and I'm not going to use that as the reason, but that is a valid reason. And also, yes, the state does allow it, but it's not state mandated. And I think that's important. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Dale. Staff would like us to determine if there's a consensus of the commission to remove this section and if we have specific findings. So, I'd just like to sort of poll the commission and see, do we, do we have a consensus on this? And I'll just start with you, Rosalie, and we'll just go around. Yes, okay. Chester?
Yes, I'm, I'd vote yes to remove it.
Okay. And Chester?
I'm leaning toward yes, but I.
Press, press your button, there.
I'm leaning toward yes, but I, I still need to look into more information.
Okay. Thanks. Stephen?
I think there's something to say for pride of ownership. And not that it's always necessarily two, as we all know, but what I liked, but I don't, but I also understand the conundrum that's presented when it's deed restricted, as far as, I'm speaking here strictly second dwelling. When that, when that second dwelling becomes deed restricted to family only, I think that's a bit onerous. I like what Santa Paula did, as I read through this. And their, their answer to was that either the primary unit or the second unit must be occupied by the property owner. So, I, for example, someone owns a larger house, their family grows, grandma's there, they do the granny flat thing as, that was traditionally used for. They grow older, they don't need the big house anymore. Now, they can move into that smaller granny flat and I, and rent out the main house. So, it can flip-flop either way. I think that flexibility brings a lot to the table for both, for the ownership of a property. And I really, I really like the, I guess I would call it the hybrid approach to this matter. It just kind of, kind of meets it halfway. And yet, there's still, there's a responsibility by the owner to, to, to be on that property in one form, shape or another, whether it's family, son, daughter, whatever that looks like. So, I, I think that's important.
Thanks, Paul.
There might be another alternative worth checking into as to whether the owner needs to be a resident of the city or a resident of the county, not necessarily living on the property itself. That might, that might handle a number of the, the issues. So, to, to answer your question, Chair, I would be in favor of this going to city council to get further public input, which has been very good, by the way, and to consider it. Not that I'm, I'm in favor or not in favor at this point.
Thanks. Kathleen?
I too am in favor of it going to city council. And I was thinking along the same lines that Paul was thinking that maybe the only restriction would be that the property owner had to live in the county or the city. And Santa Paula's, if I had to look at the four that were offered, that was the one that resonated the most with me. So, I, I'm in favor of it going further, further to the next step, but I do see that there may be some restrictions or more discussion that needs to happen.
Thank you. Rich Nierkla?
Yeah, I think that there should be, the owner should be on the property or in the county or in the, in the city. I think there's a, I think Steve mentioned it about a pride of ownership. You often see properties, you get this sort of slumlord mentality that steps in, you see it in, in cities and things. I, I think that's an important thing with having, having the owner in the, in the city or in the county. You know, it brings up a lot of different scenarios. A lot of second dwellings, people use it either, it's an economic reason for having a second dwelling. They, a young couple, they, both are working, one doesn't work and they have to have the extra income, so that's where second dwelling comes in. Second dwelling comes in when the family gets older, you get a small house, you get one of the children become a teenager, they want a, their own separate area, that's where second dwelling comes in. And then, you get with, again, the parents, the. The parents move in, they can't afford to put them into an elderly rest home, so they look after their parents, and the scenario that Steve said where you do the switch later on with, you know, so. So, I'm in favor of going to City Council, too, for more discussion and more public input. I think no one's right or wrong, all the points that have been brought up tonight, all very fair, and, you know, it's just finding a happy medium and having an agreement. But, yeah, the thing with the way the city looks is very, for me, is a very important thing. You know, you go around Ojai, and you see a lot of, it's just looking rundown, and, you know, and so, that's where I'm coming from.
Good. Thank you. Obviously, this is a pretty contentious issue, in the sense that you could go either way on it. On the one hand, I really like encouraging rental units in the house, you know, the more we can get of those, the better. But I like Mr. Miley's point about the glue that holds the community together. I think that's the whole point of this, the way the ordinance was written originally, was to kind of keep the community together. So, is that enough input for you and staff?
Oh, go ahead.
Sure.
When I'm typing minutes, just for clarification...
Yeah.
Crabtree, you support, you know, the city or county, the resident living in the city and the county, that would require a deed restriction then, still. So, that means you do not support removing the deed restriction. Is that correct?
I support...
Or an affidavit.
I support that this item go to City Council for...
Okay, so that's what we're voting on?
Yeah. Well, are we even voting?
Or not?
We're not really voting. We're just...
It's a discussion.
And the same thing goes for Chair Merk, and Commissioner Nolan, and Nicklin. Same thing. I'm not quite sure... I'm just putting undecided then. And the other point was, it doesn't... One of the cities doesn't do deed restrictions, they do affidavits, and then it's not recorded at the county, it's just in their file.
Okay. Thanks, Sheri.
Well, I would just like to add that my understanding was that... Well, let me just start over again. So, you know, it's a little, I believe, a little bit unorthodox to send things up to City Council, you know? Again, I'm new here, but my understanding is a little different than what I've experienced in other cities I've worked in, you know? So, this item kind of had a ground root swell up, and pushing it up to City Council. So, my understanding was that, you know, there needed to be some kind of consensus as to which direction you guys were suggesting. I mean, obviously, we can send it up as a, I guess, I believe, a discussion item, and they do have a work program and goals and priorities, they just did, you know, to kind of, you know, detail out their work program for the year. So, I was hoping that we'd have a little bit more firm recommendation that we're... That of how you wanted to go with this, a little bit more clear-cut about how, whether there was a consensus with the commission, because what I'm kind of getting is that you feel that there needs to be more discussion. And so, then I guess what I would ask is, we're going to send this up as a discussion item to see whether or not they wanted to send it back down to us to work on it more? Is that what I'm understanding?
That kind of makes sense to me.
Okay.
I would like to have a definite recommendation from the Planning Commission at some point, where we would either say we're changing the code, or we're not, and then it would be up to Council to kind of ratify that.
Right.
But at this point, I don't think we have a consensus on doing that.
And so, I guess, just to make it, to clarify it, that what we're saying is, at this point, there's not sufficient information for all parties to feel comfortable in making a recommendation. Ergo, we're going to ask the City Council, is if this is one of their goals and priorities, they want to sit back down, send back down to have the commission work on it?
Mm-hmm.
Or are you...
If it's something they're interested in us, really, it would be good to get some direction with Council on that, as far as...
That's fine.
Whether we should proceed with that.
That sounds good. So, then everyone agrees with that concept? We do have a consensus that that's what we want to ask of Council?
Everybody comfortable with that?
I'm good with that. I just want to go on record, think, I really feel pretty strongly committed to this idea of this hybrid approach to modifying the existing deed, keeping the deed restriction, but modifying it, so it's either or dwelling.
Currently, you mentioned Santa Paula allows them to live in either unit. The City of Ojai's does that as well. We're the same.
So, they can rent out to a non-family individual?
Yes.
Yeah.
Either unit has to be, one or the other has to be owner-occupied.
I was under the impression that that second dwelling, if it was...
No.
Why the owner had to be...
Currently, our City of Ojai's ordinance, just one of the units needs to be owner-occupied.
There's also another...
Problem with that.
There's also another... Some cities have it where you can, you have to be in one or the other unit, or you have to rent both the units to the same party. So, you could have renter, you know, you could have somebody who wants to have, for whatever reason, I mean, however that would be, just like you have guest house here, maybe you have family that comes and stays with them, who knows? But they do have that also, so.
All right. So, does that give you enough to proceed with at this point?
I think so. I think that that's very sufficient direction, and we're fine with that.
Great. Thank you. All right. So, that concludes our discussion. Oh. Further comment? Mr. Iker?
Would it be, with all due respect, a little more accurate to send it back to the Council saying that you feel that it needs to be modified? You don't have an exact consensus of how that modification, what that modification or modifications should be, but that you do feel that the deed restriction ordinance, as it now stands, needs modification? And that you want to know if the City Council wants you to confer on that?
That is a good way to put that, I think. Do other commissioners agree with that? I...
Well, I think if you use the word modification, it kind of preamps you eliminating it.
Yeah.
And so, I think you need to be careful about how you're wordsmithing this. I think that there are still commission... The feeling that I got from the conversation is that there's not enough information for everyone to feel comfortable on either eliminating it, modifying it, or keeping it as it is.
Yeah.
So, I think there's three paths you can go. You can leave it the way it is, you can eliminate it, or you can modify it, and that's really what your quandary is, I think.
Yeah. That's my feeling, is that I'd like to get some direction from the Council on whether they actually want... Yeah.
The other angle on this is just the priority of it, that we do have priorities. This wasn't on the priority list, and now, is it supposed to go to the top? Or, you know, where does it fit? Because it takes staff time and that sort of thing.
Yeah. I agree. All right.
I have a quick question for an interpretation of the way it's stated now. Let me see if I can just pick it up. It's one long phrase, but maybe I can... I'm taking it from the... I'm going to paraphrase it here. "If the property," to the very last sentence or so, "if the property is owner-occupied, and the subsequent owners shall be required to maintain the original applicant's responsibility to submit to the city annual statements that the property is owner-occupied." Can... Talk to me about the city annual statements. Is that a requirement by every owner that has a second dwelling, that they're supposed to provide an annual statement? Does that happen?
The one lady does it.
Yeah. So, I mean, so, you know, it all always, all this always comes down to enforcement to such a huge degree anyways. I mean, we know that they're out there and...
You know, again, I think that we have enough Realtors that participate in this conversation that they'll tell you that most of the time, the deed restriction is just to notify, or it's a way that staff hopes that the subsequent buyer is then notified before they purchase a piece of property of a restriction. I don't see that the annual reporting is anything but probably busy work for most people, because the idea is just to inform the next subsequent buyer. Many cities have a restriction against, you know, requiring them to be owner-occupied, but don't do deed restrictions, because, you know, it's still a rule. We have lots of rules that aren't then implemented by a deed restriction. Okay? When we use deed restrictions, which planners do all the time, you know, we do it normally through conditions of approval for something that we think is so out of the ordinary that the common person might not realize it's there. So, for instance, if you have a wet bar sink, you know, somebody puts a wet bar sink in, well, oh, that's a wet bar to one person, but then to somebody else, it's the beginning of a kitchen, and ergo, a second unit. We'll say, oh, we want a deed restriction to tell you that that's only a wet bar sink, it can't then subsequently become a kitchen, because people have different interpretations of what adding those types of things are in a home. So, we just try to be, it's just really a disclosure issue. And so, I don't know that necessarily we would have to have those annual reporting. It's kind of a separate issue, and probably, you know, something that could go away, and the deed restrictions still stay if somebody, you know, if you guys decided that. The annual... Yeah.
Yeah, it seems a bit superfluous.
Okay. Well, I think, you know, Mr. Jena, I know you have a... You'd like to say something, but we're just about wrapping this up.
Last thing. If it truly is about rental, and affordability, and income, and 48% of the people rent in this community, they don't own, and we have this deed restriction, then consider a rent restriction on the second unit, so you can truly make it affordable, and you can take care of Mr. Miley's issue with all of the investors gobbling everything up, do what they do in Santa Monica, $2 a square foot maximum rent, you'll make it unaffordable for investors to come in and scoop all this stuff up. So, that's just another thing. If you want to keep it affordable, put a rent restriction. Lots and lots and lots of communities do. So, that's another part of the puzzle you're going to have.
Good, thanks. More items for the City Council to consider, I think. All right. We're going to move along to the Director's Report and Director Actions.
So, just as you have in your binder here, we had one item that, I think it's the same item we've had for a while, huh, Sheri, on the Director's Report? Oh, did it?
Oh, yeah. I lost it.
So, it's the...
There's nothing to report.
Yeah. Sorry.
That's okay.
We'll keep reporting to you, though, as we make approvals. And then, on number six, you have your code enforcement data sheet that kind of gives you an overall view of the things that we're working on as far as code enforcement. And that's kind of an ongoing thing with the city, where, I mean, every day, there's something new with code enforcement, so it's pretty active.
This list is getting really short, though, compared to ones we've seen in the past. This is great.
I think this city is really improving, you know, code enforcement, when you're doing code enforcement effectively, it needs to be consistent, not, you can't let a case languish, you have to have consistent follow-up. And I think we've done, since I've been here, I've seen that the staff is really working towards doing that, and really reaching out and bringing cases all the way through the process to conclusion. So, it should be getting shorter.
And then, future agenda items? I notice we don't have anything scheduled for the March 19 meeting. Is that... Oh.
We continue a couple items tonight to that.
Be nice to have that.
To the 19th. And then, of course, on the 26th, we will have the cell tower.
Okay. And we're holding that at a different location?
Yes.
Has it been determined? Has it been determined that it's a different...
Location, because I've heard it has been.
It says in here, although I just hate to be a broken record, since I'm new, I have no idea where Sarzoni Park is.
Oh, wow. That should be one of the first things you know about.
The legal notice is getting mailed tomorrow, a little bit, per the City Council, a little bit early to 1,000-foot radius, and it is being posted in the newspaper three Fridays in a row, March 7, 14, and 21, to let everybody know, so.
Thanks, Sheri.
Good. Thank you, Sheri.
Is it possible to get the packet on this, on the cell tower issue, rather than Friday, Thursday, or Friday before the meeting, further in advance, so we can really dive into this thing? Because it's so important that we get that information. And I know that evidently, you're working with the public in it to some degree, so...
There's issues having to do with due process as far as AT&amp;T, too, that I don't believe you'll be getting it early. My underst... I mean, I'm just saying that, you know, it's stand...
What type of issues? Like, they have to a certain time before the meeting to submit?
They... Yeah. Correct. And I just believe that some of the issues that have been worked out with the shot clock, because everybody's saying, you know, the issues. So, I believe that the staff report will be, or the packet will be out on the 19th, isn't that your understanding, Sheri? Or, yeah?
So, the week before. That's an improvement.
Yeah.
Well, yeah. No earlier than that, I would say.
Okay.
So, it's not like, you know, obviously, it's going to be a fairly substantial packet, so we're not trying to do, you know, trying to make it a short term for you. We don't want to clog up your weekend, but we'll do the best we can. But I don't think it's going to go out, it's not going to come out substantially.
Right. Well, I think a week would be great, you know? Because on a Wednesday night, if we got it, if we received that packet on Tuesday or Wednesday, that gives us another day, so it doesn't clog up our weekend, so. Okay. Okay. Thank you.
All right.
That's right.
Thank you. Next is Planning Commission Subcommittee Reports, and Commissioner Nolan is finally here to give us a report.
Thank you. Well, we submitted the Strategic Growth Council grant application last Friday. Kathleen, did you actually, or Sheri, who hit the submit button? I knew it was one of you two. Are you both did it?
I think it was Sheri.
It was down to the wire.
It was down to the wire. Yes, it was.
Anyway, that was submitted. And we had a regular Complete Streets meeting today, and I just want to announce to the public that we meet the first Wednesday of the month, and we are now going to start meeting a half an hour earlier, because we have so much to cover. So, the meeting will be from 2:30 to 4:30, first Wednesday of the month, here at City Hall. And we're continuing to work with Greg Grant, our Public Works Director, and making great strides. Paul, do you want to add anything? Lawrence? No? Okay. Thanks.
Thank you. And I don't see a City Council liaison, so I believe we are done with our meeting. Thank you all.